Good afternoon. Welcome to the Hamilton County Staff Meeting of October 29, 2024. And we have one item on the agenda today. It's regarding the Paycor renovation update. And just to kind of start off, we did have a presentation to the board and to the public from the consultants of the possibility of what possibly Paycor Stadium could look like. And so we are moving expeditiously in a way that is very transparent to the taxpayers. So you're basically seeing stuff almost like when we're seeing it in real time so you can follow along with us. And we have been very adamant about, we're trying to push it to the public. So the public can see it because you're the investor, major investor, as we move forward. There were a lot of questions. One of the questions have been, have we looked at everything? Did we look at a dome? And I know that I had brought it up and other commissioners brought it up. We wanted to make sure that you know that we're looking at everything before any decisions are being made. There's been no decisions made at all. We are still operating and on an old lease that was around over 20 years ago, which unfortunately has handcuffed the taxpayers into a written lease where they're paying almost 95% of all the costs, but not getting any other revenues. And so we're in a 95-5 kind of deal. So as we're looking at the new potential terms of a potential lease, so none of the pictures kind of almost don't matter if we don't get the lease tied to it. But we don't want people walking around saying, did you? I've had people ask me, why didn't you look at the dome? Are you looking at a dome? And we're looking at it in the context at a time where we're being asked about a dome, we're being asked about a new arena. We've been asked about a number of projects. And as a community, we just don't have unlimited funds. So we're trying to look at everything and get the best use out of it. I do want to indicate that I know I said, and the board can speak for themselves, but we're not looking at increasing any local taxes. I want to put that out there so people will know that. I think those are important points. So before Jeff gets started, I wanted to set that tone, but I do want to open up if the commissioners want to say anything before the findings are being presented by the administrator, Vice President Dries.
Nothing other than what you've already said, which is, I think all three of us has said, no new taxes for anything that happens down at the stadiums. We already have a funding source that the voters voted on, and so that's what we're operating with, and it's a limited fund. And so we can only do so much, and some things will be out of reach for us financially. And so this presentation helps us kind of close the chapter of whether or not we can afford to put a dome on that facility.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I think it's all been said, as we're saying, no taxes. We're very adamant about that and no more 95% for residents to pay. So we want to explore every option as it relates to the dome, and that's why we brought it forth. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ludo.
Thank you, Commissioners. That teased this up quite nicely. Kristy, if you could go ahead and start the presentation, please. As Commissioner Reese, as you indicated, a few months back, we discussed the vision, one vision for the potential renovation of Paycor Stadium that was delivered to us by MSA Architects. During that presentation, we mentioned, just as you indicated, that at the board's request, we would be, and we were looking at the concept for enclosing the stadium per the board's direction to leave no stone unturned. I think that's what the board said back when we were talking about this, that this was a, essentially, we didn't want to be 10, 15 years down the road and have taxpayers, residents say, why didn't you look at this? Why didn't you look at that? That this was a generational decision that was being made, and the commissioners didn't want to not look at everything. Especially since, you know, whenever there is a stadium discussion that happens around the country, there's usually the conversation around open air versus enclosed stadium, that type of thing. So I think the board wanted to make sure that was addressed. So I'm going to walk you through the analysis here in just a moment. We had an analysis conducted by two separate firms. One was by Gensler, the other one was by AECOM Hunt. And I will say upfront that there are some, well, first of all, before I go into that, just the other thing that the board had asked that we looked at was the possible ROI and economic development impact of this as well. And I'll touch on that at the end of this presentation as well. But again, I think the board was, it was a good idea to ask this question. We know that it's the type of thing that we know resonates with residents and fans who talk about this consistently. But we know that there are a couple of challenges right out of the gate with enclosing Paycor Stadium. We know that the design of the stadium, just the shape of the stadium, as it is elliptical in nature, it's not that traditional ring that you see, creates some challenges in terms of how the stadium was designed at the top to support a roof. And also just again, that elliptical design is not set up specifically and appropriately for an enclosure. We know that, and that's specific to Paycor Stadium, but there are some other things as well, that just conditioning of the building for all seasons and uses, when you take an open-air stadium and you enclose it, it's not just about enclosing it, it's about changing all of the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems within that stadium to make sure it operates in an enclosed, it can operate in an enclosed environment as it did when it was, when it was open air. For all of those reasons, enclosing the stadium is a very expensive proposition. So again, while it was, I think it was a good, smart move to investigate this, just a little bit of a spoiler as we get into the presentation, that absent an additional revenue source or an income stream, it would be, from a financial perspective, very challenging to enclose Paycor Stadium. I'll go into a little bit of details on this. But we did go through the exercise here, and I want to show you a little bit about what we had come up with because we did, this was not something that we gave short shrift to. We did do a full analysis on this to make sure that the board could credibly say that we looked at all options. This is the first concept that we took, that we took a look at. This is, this was done by Gensler. This is what is called a tied arch design. So the support for this structure comes from the cables that are linked to the structural arch that you can see coming down the spine of the stadium, all of which hold up a lightweight, durable, plastic roofing material, similar to the type of thing that you see at some stadiums now, like up in Minnesota, US Bank Stadium, that type of material, which would be at the, at the top of the stadium. The goal of this design, I think, from a, from a creative standpoint, what Gensler was looking at was to try to match something with the bridge motif of the riverfront. And I think they'd done that in this, in this, in this design rendering. There are similar stadiums to this throughout the world. I think the one that is probably most similar to this is Moses Mabita Stadium in Durban, South Africa. So this, there's been some, there's some design precedence for this. That being said, the conceptual cost estimate on this, including the enclosure as well as the mechanical, electrical, plumbing estimate, we had three firms take a look at this, Turner, Messer, and AECOM Hunt, looking at anywhere between 950 and a billion, 950 million and a billion dollars. So this would also likely take several years to construct, could take a shorter period of time if the team were to play away from Paycor for a period of time, which we know would be inconvenient from an operational standpoint for the team and also from a fan perspective as well. But nonetheless, this was the first design that we looked at. Recognizing that the cost of this option was significant, we had also heard that there were some other, call it more practical, enclosure structures and solutions being built in other areas of the world, Europe, Asia, again, South, in Africa, South America. So we took a look at, at another design as well. So this is the second conceptual alternative that we took a look at. This, as you can see, reframes the stadium in more of a traditional ring setting, supported by structural steel columns, compression rings, again, has that, that plastic film type, type roofing. There's example, there's more examples of this, National Warsaw Stadium, Suzhou Sports Center in China, and there's actually a lot more of these types of stadia outside of this country that we could reference. But we did take a look at this as well, just trying to look for a more practical alternative that perhaps could lower the cost significantly. The cost on this, fully enclosed with the necessary MEP modifications, again, still comes out north of 900 million. So the bottom line, Commissioners, you're looking at between 900 million and a billion dollars to enclose the stadium. That's on top of the other renovations that would be needed within, within the stadium from a functionality perspective, as we've been talking about, as we, as we went into the, all the information on the facility condition assessment and the renovation plan that MSA had presented a few months ago. The additional debt service on this is going to vary, it's hard to give you a precise estimate, but if we were to issue bonds for this, which we would undoubtedly have to do for a significant portion of this construction, depending upon the number of years and the interest rate, et cetera, you'd probably be talking between 50 and 65 million in additional debt service over that, on an annual basis, over that period of time. And so recognizing the limitations of our riverfront sales tax fund, even presuming that we could somehow reduce that cost through a variety of different means, you're still talking about the need for some additional revenue source or sources to make this in any way financially feasible. The board also asked about return on investment. There's a couple of different definitions for this, and the board has referenced both of them. When, when it chartered this exercise, the first, in no particular order, the first being just covering the cost of the capital investment, is, are we getting a return by being able to pay for the project itself? And just right out of the gate, I'll tell you that, you know, in the examples I've seen, I have yet to see a newly enclosed stadium that is publicly financed, that is basing their financing off of the incremental utility that they will get from inside the stadium itself. There's always some sort of additional public revenue source associated with it, whether it's sales tax, occupancy tax, et cetera, or some combination of public funding subsidy to cover that debt service. So you're likely not going to cover the capital investment through just the additional utility of the stadium. You may, as you pull in additional events, that may help cover the operate, the additional operating costs that associated with, with the enclosed stadium, but likely not the capital cost. But there are other reasons, as the board indicated, when, again, when it chartered this exercise, the idea of just more fully utilizing an enclosed stadium. And I think when you, especially when you hear residents and fans talk about enclosing a stadium, you know, you hear about the ability to attract these types of big events for the community, Super Bowls, Final Fours, your WrestleMania, the NFL Draft, major concerts, college football playoff games, those types of things. And all of those events come with a general economic impact and beneficial impact to the community, you know, could be 15 to 50 to million dollars to more on an individual basis. Now, each of these, you're not, stands to reason, you're not going to have a Super Bowl every year. You may have the opportunity to compete and bid on a Super You may have the opportunity to compete and bid on a Super Bowl, you know, every, every 15, 20 years or so, same with the Final Four. You're not going to get these all the time. But nonetheless, these are the types of larger events combined with things like major concerts that, again, would have a positive economic impact for the community as a whole. That is a different concept than paying for the stadium itself and paying for the debt service without tapping into somehow that additional growth, be it through transient occupancy tax, sales tax, et cetera, that type of thing. So commissioners, that is a, a quick run through of the analysis that we did. Happy to answer any questions. Tom Gabelman is here with, with his crew. I want to thank Tom for, who kind of led the oversight of the consultant teams that did this work for us. So if there are some technical questions about the specific stadium models that were presented, I'm sure Tom would be happy to answer those. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer as well, commissioners. So President Reese, I'll turn it back over to you. And again, happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. One of the things that I want to, first thing I want to ask you, so we can get this off the table. Is Paycor Stadium safe currently as is? Is it safe over there? Or do we have a safety hazard? And if it is, we need to be closing it down? If it's, I just heard the question of, is it safe? So I want to get that off the table because I've got some questions and I don't want safety to come up. We all want it to be safe. Is it safe?
Yeah, the stadium itself is safe, commissioners. We have safety issues that pop up like any large facility on a, on a regular basis that we have to address. The board has been aware, they think we've had some escalator issues over the past season or two at the stadium and were addressing those. But from a general safety perspective, the stadium is, is, is safe, commissioners.
Okay, I wanted to take that off the table. Now, you gave a presentation and I appreciate it. But the presentation came off with a different type of tone. Now, I'm not advocating the money, I ain't got to that yet. But there seems to be a tone, not just with here. I remember when I was the vice mayor of Cincinnati, I said, we should get the All-Star game. We had a brand new great American ballpark. I wasn't a county commissioner, I was the vice mayor. And I remember trying to get it going and everybody was gloom and doom. Oh, well, we can't help you, it's not a good idea. Just some of the things you just said, it's not good, you can't do it. And then 10 years later, all of a sudden someone else said, we need to get the All-Star game and everybody's on board, everybody. We've got a coalition and collaboration and we can do it. And because they kept saying, we can't do it because we got open air. We can't do it because we're not a A-level city, they're not going to come to us. But I had researched and saw they come to new stadiums. But because, I guess it was little old me, vice mayor, little old African-American woman that says, we can do this with the greatest American game. Nobody, you came with, they came with everything, just like you gave a presentation. Can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do this, can't do that. And then 10 years later, somebody comes and says, oh my God, we can all get on board. And we hosted the All-Star game. Only person that was with me was Marty Brenneman. I remember that because I announced it with him. He said, this is, is a great idea. Carl Linder, the one that passed away, said, this is a great idea. But nobody would get behind it until 10 years later. We had the same thing I experienced growing up. When my parents came and said, we can do the women's Final Four here in Cincinnati. Oh, we can't do it, we can't do it. 10 years later, oh, someone got a great idea, we can do it. Well, Pat has someone had to call them to say, do we go to Cincinnati? Because I remember you had, to my father, Dr. Reese, you had the idea. And he said, yes, come to Cincinnati. So we can do it. We come back fast forward in my life. I come back and say, let's have a watch party. And I remember you having the same presentation. We can't get the people to work, it can't be done. I called over here and they said, no. Did I said, I ain't stopping it to the NFL because this came from the people. And we said, we couldn't do it and COVID got us. And can we not do it? Then they came right back with my same idea, said, let's have a pep rally. And everybody got on board, people can work, people available. And now we got a watch party series that you got to pay $99 or $100 to walk on the field. And we ain't stopped them. Nobody gave a presentation about, we can't do it, it can't be done. It's gloom and doom. So I'm saying all that to say, then you come back and I say, well, Mr. Eludo, you had another presentation, you were gloom and doom. You said, we couldn't do it, we couldn't get no workers, we couldn't get concessionaires, we couldn't get security, we couldn't open it up for the taxpayers to go in there free. And then you come back and even one of the commissioners even started asking, is our staff, do you come? Well, no, it's not our staff. And yes, they can do it. And now it's okay. And yeah, they can, all of a sudden NFL is, is, they're being more lenient now. And yes, they can make money. And yes, they can use our stadium on days that's not, you know, game days. And yes, they can do it. Then you said, well, and it's in the, but it's only in the, um, the club level. Then I said, well, wait a minute, now they on the field. Well, I got to check into it, we can't do it. So a lot of times we come with the can't. And then with somebody from the outside, if they big enough, all of a sudden they can, or they don't even ask us, they just go ahead and do it. So I wanted to preference my arguments with this. I'm not looking to pay a lot of extra money. We had one presentation came in, over a billion dollars with some screens on the outside. Yes, we gonna fix a few elevators, yes, we gonna put the carpet in. But the most expensive thing was we were going to build the team a brand new practice state-of-the-art facility. And I know the goal was maybe the team would go over there and we can use the stadium for more events. But I understand that's not what they're interested in. So now we come back and I'm looking at the future. If we're going to do 20 years, is the future a dome? I'm seeing more and more teams getting domes. So will we be back here like we were with the watch party? We can't do the watch party, we can't make it happen, we can't get anybody to work, we can't get it done, we can't do it. And then somebody else come in 10 years from now and say, hey, guys, we need a dome. And then all of a sudden you say, well, we got a little fund over here and then we can do a little borrowing over there and then we can get real creative. I'm trying to make sure we don't have to come back for 20 years. I want this thing viable for 20 years. So the first question, yes, we have a cost. But first question is, is this stadium viable for 20 years from now? Because we do it all the time here in Cincinnati. We do short range things and then have to come back and redo them or expand on them. That's why we're here now, they didn't do the dome the first time. But I'm seeing more stadiums who will compete with us. And obviously they must have another economic impact study than we got. Because I don't think Cleveland's better than Cincinnati. And they running with a dome. Tennessee's running with indoor. And these are all our tourism competitors. They're all our tourism competitors. The other thing that I'm seeing, Business Courier came out and it seems like we got maybe two different negotiations going on. We're over here trying to look at the stadium and pictures and what we're doing. There's nothing on the lease, can't do nothing without that lease. There's nothing we can do. I don't care how beautiful or not beautiful, you can't move. They got us in handcuffs for 20 plus years and none of us did it. But they got us in handcuffs and they can keep the bad lease going. Maybe that's the direction they're going because they don't seem to be paying attention to us at all. One, they had watch parties and don't have to get permission. I'm a county commissioner, I've been elected by 212,000 people. And when I got an idea, well, I got to go get somebody else and you got to go get two votes. They over there, nobody elected them to anything and they just make a change on the taxpayers' building and nobody has any, nobody can go over there. Who can, who can talk to them? Nobody. Nobody's in charge. So now we're looking at what we might do, what we want to do. And I see a headline that says Cincinnati Bengals adding new and expanded corporate sponsors resulting, I don't mind the corporate sponsors, but it says resulting in new stadium features. Now, wait a minute now, we talking about, we talking about game features, we're talking about, it says stadium features. And I thought, we own the stadium. In there, the Cincinnati Business Courier says the Bengals posted the NFL's highest sponsorship revenue growth, 64%. We already had Forbes come out and say, they're the richest in America. Not because they had another industry, but because they owned the team and they got this lease. This lease is worth a lot of money. This lease is worth billions, not millions. Then you go in and it says, they've got a sponsor. And I'm not against the sponsors, but the sponsors has a new jungle lounge. Well, didn't we get presented a lounge? We got presented we was going to have lounges. But they done went on and got his sponsors and got paid for a lounge. Didn't come up with one bill, newly renovated. Who's renovating it? Have we okayed the renovation and I didn't know anything about it? Maybe my colleagues might know, I don't know, I'm not speaking for them. But renovations are happening and they're getting sponsorship. I thought we were the landlord. Then you go on, got several initiatives, community initiative, I appreciate those. But then it goes on to talk about, this was particularly interesting. And this just was me glancing. They said they got Sports Illustrated tickets. To do what? It's hosting a series of what? Jungle what? Watch parties. Now, why did I have to come in here? Mr. Eludo, you said, we can't do this, we can't find nobody and can't nobody work. And we can't do this, we can't do that. The same thing you telling me about the dome. And they've gone on, said, I don't care what y'all saying. We're going to get sponsored for the ideas and we're walking on the field. And I think we had to put some money up for this field. Told us we had to get a certain kind of grass and all that, you brought it to us. Because we don't talk to the Bengals and we got some grass. They walk, they making money off that grass with a watch party. And we can't even get in there and have anything free for the taxpayers. You told me, nobody can show up, nobody can clean up, nobody can work. But they went on and they're doing it anyway. Anyway, we talked about doing stuff for high schools. Our attorneys were talking about, we got a plan for high schools. They already uncut the high school and moving on. Are we having conversations? So my point is, we can't come in here when the commissioner come up with something. And it's, we can't do it and you got to go get two people. What they needed, did they get two people? Did they get two people? And they making renovations inside the place that ain't even asked you and getting paid for it? Didn't get one vote. So it's something going on. Then it says, Fifth Third Bank is one of the Bengals' largest sponsors. We love Fifth Third. They paid 3 million in 2023. They said, we're still seeing growth. But we still paying 95% of all the cost. This is what I want to get down to. The dome, I want to really look at it. I think it, I think from the picture standpoint, it did look nice. Now, that doesn't mean, oh, this research, I am a marketer, things have to look good. At the same time, if they're bringing in more money, shouldn't it reduce our cost? I want them to bring in more private money and reduce our cost. But renovations are being made and we ain't got one person on this board that voted for it. Watch parties are being had. Now we're mon, they're monetizing the watch parties. And we can't even get in there to get the taxpayers in there to watch anything for free. So we're going on two different tracks. And I just wanted to say, because I felt the tone was, we looked into it and we can't do it, we can't. So I'm concerned that someone else will show up outside of this board and say, we got a dome and then everybody, oh man, I found some money and we got some bonds over here and wait a minute, we done took in more. Let me talk, call the treasurer's office, we done got some interest rate money and, oh, now we can move and shift and all of that. And I want that to stop. I want that to stop. So I will put on the table that, for me, I would have to say before I say completely no. I need a monetize of everything that's being proposed that we received. We got a packet, but I need to know everything and all the cost. And maybe there's some things on there we don't want, we can't have. And before, I'm willing to just throw it out, baby with the bathwater. Second is, performers do matter. Economic development does matter because somebody going to get up. It's like they did with the All-Star game. I got a bright idea, let's try to get to Super Bowl. Then everybody, we got a committee and now the county got to put money in for a study because we do it all the time. You don't say, oh, we're not going to do that, we've been doing it, we, we studying everything. They call up the administrator, we want you to join this committee and then you come talk to each of us. And the only reason they want you on the committee, although, you know, I love you, Jeff Eludo, but it ain't because you smile, it's because they want some money. They've never put the county on any board that didn't require us to put up some money. Otherwise, they wouldn't come running down here. We're on a board right now for an arena. You came and said, hey, they want me, they really want me. You're only on there because they want some money. The next thing was, hey, they want you to put in, want us to put in some money for the study. Next it'll be, hey, we want you to finance it. So I'm saying, we have less money. I would like to see a multifaceted facility that can be an arena and can be other events, football, whatever. I'm looking for a sports entertainment component. So if we're going to spend 500 or 600 or 800 million on a new arena, we're small market, we need to have a conversation now. While we got this facility, do we put the arena next to where they don't want the practice facility? Do it become next to the practice facility? We cut the cost 50/50 or something and have a complex? Those are the kind of conversations that I believe we should have. As far as the Bengals, our conversation has got to get down to this lease because they're doing renovations, they moving forward. And they ain't talking to us. I don't remember voting on any of these things. A new lounge renovated, I didn't, I didn't vote for any of that. I didn't vote for that. I didn't vote for a watch party that charges the people $99 and 25 more dollars to walk on the grass. I didn't vote for any of that. So I wanted to, people say, well, yes, this, no, we can't do them in silos. It has to be, put all the cards on the table, taxpayers, here's what everything is. This is what we're dealing with. Now, according to our lawyers, they didn't open their books. But in Forbes Magazine wrote, they opened the books. So I'm confused about what's going on. So I don't want to be the can't do it group on everything. But then when the big boys come in, we the can do it group. And we only got 48 hours to get it done. And if we're not a city, and I don't believe this, we're a city and a county that's been bringing big ideas. We're trying to bring the big Sundance Film Festival. We're finalists, we're trying to, we done brought Blink here that's international. We done brought the All-Star game here. So we can't be the community that say, we just can't make it happen. It's gloom and doom. Now, who should pay for it? I would like to see more private business, I want, I like their stepping up. I just want to make sure that the cost then would reduce the cost on the taxpayers. I appreciate the corporate citizens stepping up. But the stepping up has somehow got to tone the taxpayers down because corporate has already stepped up. And I don't think we're getting any credit for those kind of things. So I, I appreciate what you presented. I can't really deal with the cost at this time because I need to know what on the other cost. It was a lot of wish list things on there. What's the baseline? And then what's the baseline on this? And then 20 years from now, what are we going to be looking at? So we don't have to come back and then we got, all of a sudden, we got to do a dome. And then the arena, we got to be clear on that. People say, I ain't heard nothing about, it's in the newspaper. I get it right here. And we're on the committee, not us, but our administrator is. Cincinnati Regional Chamber was spearhead new arena study. And we chipped in on it, if I ain't mistaken. And Mr. Eludo is sitting on the committee, they're looking right now on an arena. So my point is, we got to put them all together. Because we don't have money to keep doing. So my point is, we got to put them all together, 'cause we don't have money to keep doing one-offs, one-offs, one-offs. So I appreciate looking at that. I still think it should be more conversation and I do need to hear back on all these new renovations inside the Cincinnati Paycor Stadium. Because if the renovations are already being paid for and done, I need to know what is our role and what are we doing? And why don't we know about it? But please, when we bring up something, I don't like it. When we bring up some, our stuff is always last and slow-walked. Always bring that up. I know you don't like it. Paycor wanted to put their name up, they didn't tell us. The Bengals, to this day, we don't know what the deal is. We went to bed, somebody's employees put it up. We got employees working over there. We went to bed, it was up and it had never even gone to the planning commission. Planning Commission Cincinnati don't meet till Monday. It was up on Sunday. It was up on Sunday. And O'Donnell Owens, I know you got papers to show me this and that, but it took us two years to put some letters on our building. And I just can't buy it. No matter what you tell me, you can't tell me that a stadium could get Paycor all over it in 48 hours and Dr. O'Donnell Owens' building is two years before we can get it. And I know that we all have been pu, had been pushing for it. So again, one set of rules is what I'm pushing for and I'd like to know more about this new money coming in. It's a great thing, but maybe it's something we don't have to pick up now. I need to know. So anyway, that's what I have for the dome conversation. And again, I'm not pushing the price, you know, it looks big, but we got to make sure we not gonna come back here in a couple of years and say, "We gotta do a dome." Tennessee's doing it. Browns are getting ready to do it. All of our competitive sets are moving in that direction and I don't want the NFL to come back and say, "Now, we want everybody to have domes." And then all of a sudden, we scraping and scrambling. NFL, to me, has not stepped up in Cincinnati like they've stepped up in other places around the country. And I'm calling on them to step up and I'm calling on us to look at, if we're gonna do arena and we're gonna do the stadium, how can we work together to possibly maybe have an area that can have both, but do it in a way that it doesn't cost the taxpayers more? So that's where I'm coming from. All of this is on sales tax and if you bring people in, they buy more bubble gum and food and stay in hotels, that's more money that goes to the, to the county. Okay, I'll open it up, Vice President Druus.
Thank you. Jeff, I have a question before I have any comments. So you talked about the cost for the capital, for putting a dome in place, but you didn't talk much about the maintenance costs, the annual maintenance costs. I don't know if we have those numbers.
Yeah, Commissioner, I didn't have that in this particular presentation. There typically is an increased cost for, for maintenance because of the additional mechanical, electrical that you have to put in. I don't have that number. I can get that to you. I know we had done some estimates on it, so I can get that information to you after the presentation.
Okay, yeah, I just, I don't want to lose track of the idea that if we were to build a dome and it goes over the stadium, imagine the cost to condition the air in the, in a dome. I mean, I've got a house that is, this is big and it's expensive to condition the air in my house. So I cannot imagine what that cost would be. So I just, I, it occurred to me that, you know, while what we're talking about is building the dome itself, we haven't talked much about the annual cost. And I, I, my expectation is that it would be a significant cost. I don't know if anybody in the room has, has that number, but I, I just wanted to note that, 'cause it's really not been part of the conversation.
Yeah, Commissioner, just briefly, I would imagine those costs are, can be significant as you, as you indicated. We can try to get you more on that afterwards. But again, that's, as I indicated in the presentation, when people, when other communities have traditionally tried to cover costs associated with a dome stadium, that's typically what they're trying to cover, is that increased operational cost or the O and M cost, but typically not the capital, the increased CapEx.
Okay. Okay, so, and, and thank you for the, the presentation. You know, I have long held the opinion that we can't afford a dome. I don't think that's a secret. I've said that a number of times. But was happy that, you know, to go with the majority to say that we can do an analysis to see if that in fact is true, that we can afford a dome. And so we had a number of agencies or organizations do some of this analysis. We got the analysis for the cost of the dome and then also the benefit, the ROI, associated with that dome, which leads to the idea of whether or not we can afford to do it. So the cost is about $1 billion, give or take, and we have a limited funding source, which is the sales tax that people put in place decades ago to take care of these stadiums. And none of us want to increase the revenue going into stadiums. And so from my vantage point, this is just a math equation, can we or can we not afford all of the renovations that need to be done? And we've had many discussions about the facilities master, the facilities maintenance plan and the master plan. And to put a billion on top of that cost, you know, from, from what I've heard, we just can't afford it. Unless we're gonna increase revenue somewhere, we can't, we can't afford it. Or do none of what has been put in front of us by way of the, the renovations. So I want to get to that, because this is a matter of, you know, frankly, what we can afford and what the priorities are. So, you know, we, we need to take care of these stadiums. They're large county assets. This goes to the long-term viability of these stadiums, all the investments that we've been making. And to be clear to the public, we make investments in these stadiums every year and it's in the millions. These are not small investments. And that's what the sales tax is for. It's to pay debt service, it's to maintain the stadiums, it's to do the PTR. And so we've got a lot of pressures on the sales tax fund. And so we've got to take that into account, because none of us want to increase that sales tax for the stadiums. And so the viability, an old stadium really comes into play here, because we've got some things to do in order to make sure that they are maintained well and are kept safe. And so we have had the facilities plan, we had that in, I gosh, it's been a year back, I'm sure, that's hundreds of millions of dollars to do the maintenance and to do what we need to simply keep up with an aging facility. And then we've got the master plan on top of it, which was the presentation we had by MSA a number of weeks ago. That was a presentation to us. That is not something that we have agreed to. The price tag on that was $1.2 billion. And so that seems like a very high number as well, and I'm not sure we can afford that. I'm pretty sure we can't. We are looking for a financial stack from the NFL, the team in the state of Ohio, to help us with some of what is in that master plan. We would like to do some of it. And what we would like to do is the forward-facing stuff that is to the benefit of the fans and the community, because we want to use that stadium for something other than just football games. And so in order to accomplish that, there are things we need to do to the stadium to make it more, you know, to make it more accessible for different kinds of events and different kinds of individuals having different experiences in the facility. So we talked a lot about accessibility. We talked about opening up the plaza, which is a choke point, and we've started working on that. We talk about maintenance and waterproofing and, you know, all the, all the infrastructure that's, that's in the facility that leads to safety when it comes to escalators and freight elevators and things that are aging. And we need to make sure we're making investments there, so we don't have any safety situations down at the stadium. We talk a lot about the vertical transportation and how we simply don't have enough by way of the escalators and so they are overwhelmed with the number of folks that are getting on them and we need to pay attention to that. And then again, these opportunities that exist for other events to take place in these stadiums. So that is what's on my mind as I think through how we analyze whether or not it makes sense to put a dome on these stadiums. I think we got a report that it's less than half of the stadiums throughout the country have domes. So while there are some that are contemplating it, not all do. And so I don't know that we'd be an outlier if we don't do a dome. So, you know, here we are. We've, we've had the analysis, we've got the price tag, it's $1 billion. We've got a limited funding source, we've got a lot of to do in the stadium, we've got two studies to prove it, and from my vantage point, we just can't afford it. And I, I don't, I have not heard people clamoring for a dome. I understand the idea of having some of these very large events once every now and again. And so there is no way that the ROI from some of these occasional events, if we were to dome the stadium, are gonna pay for that dome. I mean, it, it just doesn't pencil out. And so, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to be a wet blanket. I've never thought that this would pencil out and from what we've seen, from my vantage point, it does not. And so I am happy that we had the study, but I, I think it's, from my vantage point, it's very conclusive that $1 billion is something that we simply can't afford with our limited funding sources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for your presentation. Just a couple of points. We did what we said we were gonna do. Had an assessment for the residents in our community, in our county, and we've done that. And I think it was a great assessment. For me, the number one thing as a commissioner is to maintain the basic services of our residents, not to have to pull money from other places, but to make sure that our residents have a quality way of life. That's number one for me. Number two, as it relates to the stadium, I want to focus on renovation, expansion of the services for our residents, so they can be more involved. And I like the plan that we came up for expansion. Also, public safety, which was mentioned earlier, the upgrades needed for public safety. And number three, as we look at this presentation, the economic impact of the activities does not support what would we get back in order to supplement this dome. The activities are just not good enough, they're not consistent enough to make sure we can get enough money back. It comes down to dollars and cents for me. The numbers of the cost for the dome are obviously, to me, cost prohibitive, cost prohibitive. We just don't have it. It's simple for me. You can see that we don't have it. It'd be nice to have it, but for me, forget about a dome. That's where I am. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ludo, I would ask, since you're both sitting on the arena committee, as well as we got the stadium, and my understanding is that the new practice area, the team is not interested in that. To see the viability of the arena and the stadium next to each other, and if we're all saying that we definitely don't have the money and we all believe that, my understanding was there was a number of $500 million that was given to us. As the stadium can survive, it can be as is. We got the team, obviously, making some changes on the inside. Maybe we look at the original, I'd like to be presented, is there a possibility where the original $500 million and whatever we're gonna give to the, toward the arena and we might be able to get two-for-one in that facility? I'd like to at least look at that and be presented with it, since we're on both committees right now. We've got a study where, that we've invested in on the arena. And now, my understanding is what was presented to us, they're not interested in that, that fancy practice facility. And maybe that might be in place for the arena that would allow us to have an indoor. And then maybe we look at, if they don't need it, maybe we look at only the $500 million as is, with a few little touching up. But I'd like to see that scaled as well as we're going into the, into the, hopefully, negotiations. And then lastly, I do want some answers that you could send to me about what's happening, renovations going on inside the stadium, if you could send that to me as well.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, you're talking about inside, you're talking about renovations inside Paycor Stadium?
Yeah, that they have in here, Business Courier, they announced it, that they have, Corporate America's stepping up to make those renovations. And to me, that helps us if we get an outline and itemized. We got a presentation, but we didn't get itemization. Itemize each thing, so then we can look at what is it that we got to have and what we don't want in this billion-dollar deal. Because when you start taking it down, it's gonna be less than $1 billion.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, you're talking, itemize of that?
Yeah.
You, you received an itemized cost.
Okay, well, can I, I didn't, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it, it's in there.
Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll look at your version and you can get it.
Because there's some things in there I know I didn't want and some that should take the cost down. But more importantly, I want to get an update on where we are on this lease. Because we doing all of this ripping and running and billable hours and all of that and we don't have a, we don't get out of this thing here, nothing, nothing we talk about is gonna matter. Taxpayers were signed away over 20 years ago. So we gotta say, and they can keep this going, they only gotta give us 12 months notice. So I don't want to be Ring Around the Rosies or on the little, you know, we, we riding around going to merry-go-round. We gotta find out an update of where we are on this, the lease. And then we can kind of know where we're going, because they might come back, say, "We gonna keep it as is and we keep what we got and we've got, we're making money off of these renovations. We making money. We gonna keep what we going, what we doing." So I want to make sure that the people know that that is a option. Our board, obviously, is looking and working hard to try to get out of this hole that we're in, but there is an option for them to expand. So with that, oh, yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask the question you had said about another assessment that you maybe wanted Tom and them to do.
No, not Tom to do, I said, we have a, they're, they're already doing an assessment on arena, where should it go?
Mm-hmm.
We're already paying into that.
Okay.
And I want to make sure that location, now that the Bengals said they don't want it, may be available. And if they're asking us to be put in, obviously, we're only at the table, because they're gonna want us to put something in. I'd like for them to explore that area, because we might come back and say, if the Bengals come back and say, "We want to keep it as is. It's only 500, well, not only, but it's 500 million as is." And then we've got folks coming to us about an arena.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm saying, if we're not doing it, at least for me, it'll help me to know if they're, they're looking now, they're paying now to look at places. And I'd like for this to be on the tape.
Okay.
So can I just interject? I, I haven't heard that that's been definitively decided, that the team is no longer, or rather, that they wouldn't move out of the stadium into a different location. So I, I mean, I, you may have heard something that I have not been privy to, but I didn't know that that was something that was definitive.
Thomas?
So I, I don't mind looking at it if it's available.
Tom, if you want to tell them, what did the team say?
I mean, we, we would prefer that they not be in the stadium. We've, I mean, it's because then we have additional space and we've got more opportunity for other things to happen in the stadium.
Right.
So that's where we sit. I know where we, I think where we sit.
Yeah, we said that, but we didn't say we gonna pay for no Taj Mahal next door.
Right.
But we, but you indicate, what, what did you indicate? I don't have privy to anything. I want the board to know.
So, as you mentioned, there are several components to the proposed vision that was presented back in mid-September to the board, which totaled $1.2 billion. Part of that vision was a team complex that would be comparable to other NFL facilities in terms of practice, training, business ops, all that stuff. And that did range between $250 to $300 million plus to do that entire complex. From the team perspective, they are much more interested and have expressed an interest in the core stadium, taking care of the core stadium in terms of its maintenance, the capital repairs, and then in addition to that, if we can make improvements that will extend the useful life of the stadium to be sustainable. So in the first instance, we've had it confirmed, the stadium is sustainable, right, at least for the next 20 years, if we make improvements in the capital repairs that have been presented. I'm just talking about the stadium. That extends its life another 30 to 40 years at a minimum, with or without a roof, okay? So that's what we're looking at. So if we look at the core stadium itself, those...
We got that part. But the question was, I know Commissioner Dumas, I believe, had asked that question. She wanted to know, what did the Bengals say? Do they want that? They said they're not interested in that. They want to stay in the bubble.
In terms of, in terms of their operations presently, they're saying it's a much higher priority to focus on the stadium versus a team-developed complex on their existing practice facility. The team, as part of the original lease that everyone has been talking about, does have the right to the practice fields and the practice facilities and the indoor practice facility that has already been built. So if you want to consider, would it, one, would an arena actually... So, if you want to consider, would it, one, would an arena actually fit within that same space, maybe as modified with what's been presented with Marion Way being relocated, arena could be located there. You would also have to get, well, the lease is up in 2026, so you either have to have a change in the lease, or the Bengals would have to have a facility other than down on the Riverfront for its practice purposes. So, is that clear?
On that drawing, you had a lot of, on that drawing, and MSA did a very good job. I don't want to take away from that. But on your drawing, you had a whole lot of green everywhere, and it went beyond their practice field, right?
Correct.
And so, we got, I mean, it's still, so there's some land there, and even the governor brought up, I said the same thing, but I didn't say it in front of him. I kept it to myself because we was on the same page. But I'd already asked about that. All this green space does not bring any green backs. And he even said, all this green space, how are you going to make money? So, my point is, we have additional green, based on the green that you have on the drawing, as a possibility for potentially. I just said, if they're looking at spots, I'm just saying, and we're on the committee, not us, not the commissioners, but our representative, Mr. Ludo, is sitting on the committee, and we're only sitting on the committee because they're going to ask for some money. And we put some money into the study. I'm saying, let's look at some of the stuff that you guys have put together. MSA, it's got a lot of greenery down there. Maybe it's not that particular spot, maybe it's another one, and maybe you have a complex of, like they said, if they don't want investment in the stadium, but a few little dollars, then maybe there's opportunity to get two for one. But we need, I just want to, I want to know about it before it's too late. And if it ain't, it's not. But we, at least, I, I've looked at it. I think it's a viable thing to look at.
Right.
Okay, so, my question was...
Yes.
That if, we haven't had the negotiation yet with the Bengals about whether or not that part of the master plan makes sense. We're in the middle of a negotiation right now, and so, I just, all I'm saying is that I don't know what the, if the timing lines up. And if they, if people want to study whether or not that's large enough for an arena and the infrastructure's there and all that, that's fine, but we haven't even gotten to square one with trying to figure out if the Bengals and the county are going to come to some kind of agreement related to them, you know, moving into a different location, you know, beside the stadium. So, I just brought it up because, you know, it's been mentioned as a possibility, and I don't want to leave out the possibility that they might move there. And from my understanding, too, the green space is parking. I mean, it's, it's green, but...
There's, it's, it's green to accommodate parking for the number of events a year that would be at the stadium.
So, and I don't want to lose track of that either, because I know it looks just like straight-out park, park space...
Right.
From the aerial view, but that's green parking there that we need for some of the activities on the Riverfront. So, I just, I just want to lend that perspective, that's all. I mean, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing necessarily. I just, we've, we've got a couple of options, I think, in front of us, and we're not quite there yet.
Commissioner Dumas?
I just wanted to clarify what Commissioner Treehouse said. We are not in the middle of negotiations. You said, we're in the middle of negotiations, and we need to be clear that we're not in the middle.
Well, in terms of the...
The lease.
The lease itself.
Yeah.
Well, we're certainly trying to be in the middle of negotiations.
Yeah. Go ahead, finish. Go ahead, finish, Commissioner.
No, I don't see it that way.
Okay.
At all, because I think the media will say, well, we're in the middle. That means you're almost at the end. You started, and you're in the middle. We're not there yet at all.
No, I agree. We're not there yet, but we've asked for meetings with the Bengals, given the fact that we've got two, the plans are finished, we've asked them to respond, so we're trying to, so to me, that's, we're in the middle of that. So, we had, just have a different, you know, we're just saying the same thing.
Well, when you said negotiations, I saw the ears get up.
We've asked for the meeting, that's for sure.
Well, the thing is, I think the thing, the issue is...
We're always in the middle of negotiations with the Bengals.
The county is ready to negotiate. We have not negotiated. This thing has not been negotiated, and even if you build a new park, and they get 98% because we don't have this negotiated. Now, they are doing, they're moving forward with some renovations that we are not a part of necessarily. And it has, then we've got a bunch of this, and then we asked for their reaction. You just gave some of their reaction. They're not as interested in that facility. They're interested in whatever that is. But we will continue to have the difference with us now. We're not going behind the curtain in the smoking room and then come out and say, here it is. We're saying, we're putting it all out there to the people because you're paying, and we're, we want you to see it as we're seeing it. Here are the questions that we're asking as we move down this page.
Right. So, just, just so that we are clear, though, where both the board is aligned and really the team, as it relates to that vision for the master plan, and saying, whether we're talking about the, let's say, 15, 20 acre, 15 acres that comprise the current practice facility, both the board and the team are making it very clear, our focus is on the stadium, the core stadium, maintain it, operate it, repair it, and then what can we do to improve it that would drive greater revenue for both the board and, yes, the team? So, that's, that's based on our discussion, since the master plan's been released, the vision for the master plan's been released, there is an alignment between the board and the team as far as where should the priorities be in terms of dollars going into it and not focus on, for example, the team complex that has been referred to that has the huge price tag on it.
Okay. We're use, sorry.
Commissioner Dumas?
I don't know, you know, I'm just a stickler about words.
Yeah.
And you say, we're in alignment with them, and I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're in the alignment. I mean, we brought information to them, they're looking at it, they're reviewing it, and some of the things they think they can go with, I don't know if we're in alignment yet. And as far as that master plan, I'm still looking at where we can maybe cut some...
Right. No, 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 no. I was going to say, no, 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 I'm sorry. In terms of just alignment on this particular issue that we're talking about, the team complex and where money should go, does it go there first versus the stadium? What the board has said and what we understand from the team's reaction to the vision is that that team complex is not a higher priority than the stadium. And that's all that you have reflected to us. So, I'm sorry if I, I wasn't saying, we're not in alignment on all issues, no.
I know we're not in alignment of all issues, but the other thing is, there are different things that the team can do within the stadium without our permission, and those are some of the things that they're doing as far as getting these private businesses to help them, and so, it's just not clear. It's clear to me that some things they do in the stadium, they don't have to have our permission to do. It's an internal, programmatic kind of operational thing. And so, I think we need to be clear, or the public needs to be clear, that some of the things they do, they don't have, like they did with the sign, but that's a whole, the sign is a whole nother issue. But within that stadium, they can do what they're doing about the jungle thing or whatever. If they inside of that stadium want to do it, they can do it. So, I think it needs to be some clarity on what they can do without our permission, without our vote, that we have no control of.
Right, and we can, we can clarify that.
And that's why I said the number one issue needs to be the lease. All this other stuff is crap, and some of this stuff is not programmatic. These are structural changes. It says jungle, but it's renovated, and they're not talking about a jungle program. They're talking about, I mean, something's going, some hammers or something going to come out. This has got to be changed. So, when you change anything to the structure of the building, it's like the landlord. When you're renting a house, or you're renting an apartment, and you come in there, you can't just come in there anytime you want to with bulldozers, and I'm going to take the kitchen out, and I'm going to put it in the bathroom now, because when you return it, that kitchen and bathroom got to be as is. And then they send inspectors in to examine their property. Even when you're renting, they only got to give you 24 hours, and they coming in there with their own key. When we come, we can't even get in there. We got to get permission. They, that's just simple landlord tenant things. Now, this jungle is the same thing we talked about in your presentation that was sent in here, this thing here that the MSA had. We was going to renovate some of the areas, right? So, my point is, it's different if they say, well, I'm just going to put a person's name on it, and we make some money off of it, but there's some renovations. And then when they tell us, we can't do something, and then you find out you really can, it's like somebody telling the landlord, you can't, you can't come in here and paint the place. They can't because they own the building. They can come in there anytime they want to and paint it. So, for me, I want to get to the lease. All these chit-chats, and it's only going one way, it's not going our way, stuff we talk about ain't getting implemented. And then stuff they doing, they ain't even got to talk to, that's already a problem with the lease, when the landlord can't do nothing, but the tenant got all the rights. That don't even exist in real world. People watching right now that's renting, they don't have that type of power. So, we got to get this lease in order, and all I'm saying is, on here, it's got a price tag. We did, you said you had the rundown. It's a price tag for us fixing some areas, and then over here, they said they already fixed the areas, and they ain't said nothing to it. We got to get some kind of, there's got to be a balance. There's no way we can move forward with negotiations going in that particular direction. So, I'm hopeful that we can, I guess I want to get a timetable, when we going to get down to this, so that we can, because this and this got to go hand in hand. You get more parking? They already got the parking. You put more screens up, they got it in here, digital screens, they get all revenue. It's, it's, it's got to be hand in hand, so I look forward to more of these type of conversations.
Yeah, I wanted to make a comment.
Yes, Commissioner.
And I see you shaking your head. So, I just want to make sure, I want to, I want to clarify, for instance, the, the name of the jungle thing that they're renovating inside the stadium, making another room or whatever, another area of jungle, is that something that they need to tell us about, or is that something they can do?
It really depends on the extent of it. I mean, we're not familiar...
I mean, if they're renting, if they're closing out a whole floor, or if they're, if it's major infrastructure changes, they need to tell us.
Capital improvements that they make, they need to tell us, yes.
But if they're...
We approve it.
Commissioners, if I, if I could.
But if they're...
I understand.
Capital improvements that they make...
Okay, but if they're just making an area...
They have the ability to do it, but they do get our approval.
Finish.
Sorry.
Is it okay if I finish? What was I saying? But anyway, if they were going to make an area, a jungle area, and not change any roofing or flooring, or they wouldn't have to tell us, that's right?
No, so, for example, they, to that point, I mean, they do have, for example, there are naming rights to the Cur source club for the East Club Lounge. If you look at some of the...
But they don't have to tell us who they're naming for each part or not?
Only for the stadium, naming rights per se.
Well, that's what I'm saying, internally, I'm trying to figure out, what do they have to tell us about if it's not a major capital improvement?
Right. I think that's, that's what we would have to look at to know what the extent of this jungle room that they're talking about. We don't know if it's a 200-square-foot room or a 20-square-foot room. We have no idea. But we'll look into that, and we'll report back to the board what it is. The history's been, whenever the Bengals have made significant capital improvements, it is, yeah, it's discussed with the county and it's run through. Putting banners around the field is not something that we would typically weigh in on, or structuring temporary stages within the building is not something that they run by the county.
That's what I...
Yeah. And they have made those types of improvements where they're just, where they're that type that are additive or more marketing-oriented than a straight capital improvement.
And the marketing component on the inside is something, of course, they don't have to tell us.
Under the current lease, they derive all the revenue from the sponsorships and all the advertising, all the marketing.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm a marketer, so I understand the difference, but that's why we need a new lease, because it's on the outside, it's on top of the roof, it's, it's, it's everywhere, but it has to be a new lease. Yes, if you agree with this old lease, yeah, we just, whatever they want to do. But if we get a new lease, we're going to have to really go through some of these things so we're not just finding out stuff in the newspaper. Or when we come up with the idea, and we got to be a little different, we come up with the idea, it can't, we can't, we ain't no good, and then they come up with the idea, oh, yeah, that's wonderful. I, I feel like we've got to get a better lease. So, I think it's just down to the lease, to me, for me, it's the lease. And then, if they're making improvements that are also recommended in this proposal we have, does it take our cost down, is what I'm asking? But you'll look into that.
Right, we will. Report back to the board.
Thank you. All right, but there's no further business. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff. You sure?
Yep.
I don't want to cut you off now.
I'm okay.
Got something else to add? Don't mess with me. Okay, Michael, you got, you too laid back over there. Michael, you got anything?
I'm good.
All right, we have no further business. I make a most to a gentleman.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse? Commissioner Summer Dumas?